Hey.
You guys all right?
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Board of Health Regular Meeting for Wednesday, October ninth, two thousand nineteen. I will now call the meeting to order. As a reminder, this meeting is being video and auto-recorded for future cable broadcasts and also for YouTube broadcasts. Just to bring that to your attention, uh, that being said, would everybody please stand and join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thanks everyone, Seth, why don't you come on up? Have a cheer with us, please. Welcome to Dayton.
Thank you.
And other areas. Why don't you go ahead and start and if we have any questions, we can, uh, throw them at her and...
Alright, so, um, the vape end update, um, basically there is a geographical application update that allows a seller located in Massachusetts to make a sale of vaping products by online phone or other means for delivery to a consumer located in another state. New Hampshire and Connecticut are jumping for joy right now. The area that I highlighted is the update, everything else is still saying the same. So this basically just gives a little bit of grace to some of the vape only stores or the twenty-one and older stores that really relied heavily on electronic products. Um, in regards to the, uh, pulmonary lung disease update in Massachusetts, that number jumped up to a hundred and twenty-one along with one death in Hampton County for vape-related illness. So Massachusetts represents about ten percent of those cases, so it's understandable why we're taking this type of...
Pretty high.
Yeah, for I mean fifty states worth of vapors and one state makes up more than ten percent.
Yeah, we did all our, uh, inspections one evening, as a matter of fact, it was last evening we had to cancel. So since we were gonna have me, we went out and made everyone come into compliance. I don't know if you've been out at all to any of our places, but, um, they should all be in compliance. We, when I go a place, I, I check automatically, I'm sure these guys do too, so.
Yeah.
So.
I've been to all nine of my communities, especially the vape only stores, the twenty-one and over, and the only place that I've ever had an issue with was Attleboro and Fall River. Um, but just people are like, I'm waiting for, we were waiting for you to show up to basically tell us to comply.
Yeah, I had that too.
And we weren't gonna shut down until somebody came and told us to shut down. And, um, you know, it is what it is right now.
Yep.
Um, I've only had to take this out and then they started, this is a ce- the cease and desist orders that I've been using.
Oh, right.
And I wanted to make sure it was alright with you, I did it for Attleboro and Taunton. Um, but there's that little section, it's at the bottom, operation and violation of the area for you. Right underneath the box, operation and violation of the cease and desist order is a violation of law may result in fines, seizure of vape products, or other penalties. Now, the big piece is seizure of vape products, that usually gets them to comply. Um, but the other piece that I wanted to make sure was alright with everyone here is, uh, underneath where I would sign, just as an agent of Dayton Department of Public Health. I've been sworn in here and it's better for me to put this, rather than Director of Western Bristol County, to actually just have the community that I'm serving directly. I don't think that I would ever have to get one of these because it seems like everybody's already complying, but I just wanted to make sure as a backup plan that I have this ready to go.
I would actually recommend as well is, if you did come across in our community...
Yeah.
Someone that actually violated this, um, this normal procedure, but then, um, we would like to invite them in and have them explain why on earth they still can't comply when it's, uh, the information's out there and they've been instructed to. So I just want to actually bring them in and say, discuss with them. Cause there's really no excuse anymore, until, till the governor lifts it, when he lifts it or whatever, um, there's no excuse for an establishment to, um, dis- um, display or sell in Massachusetts.
Yeah, after so long, the uniform since September twenty-fourth, we've had plenty of time now. Um, I really don't think that'll be an issue here, but this is just to cover the bases. Um, the last thing that I wanted to bring up is that the three stores that have filed lawsuits against the state, um, they're all, uh, far north of here, but Boston Vapers, Vic's Vape Shop in Medford, and, um, Massachusetts Dynamics in Waymouth. Their pre- uh, preliminary injunction is scheduled for October fifteenth. Um, they seem to be very prepared, so a lot of things could change in the coming week is what I'm, what I'm getting at. And there's a couple of other people that have tried to hop on with this, but as of right now, it's three bigger stores that are...
Yeah, this must have really got the vape shops.
Yeah.
Totally, that's all they do, you know, so. Um, you know, it was kinda odd when I was in preparation for the last meeting. I was gonna discuss this actually and wanted to actually increase the age to twenty-one for all vaping products before. And then this came out about two or three days prior, the total ban. Uh, cause I kinda felt the twenty-one, uh, age would be probably adequate to, uh, you know, it's...
Rather than grandfathering?
Well, nobody grandfathered, just set the new age of twenty-one, that's what just smoking is, so.
Yeah.
But we don't know if this is worse than smoking or not, I, at this point, I think it is, but...
Well, it, it's already twenty-one with the vaping.
Is it included?
Well, it's not the devices. The non-nicotine products are causing a problem too, right?
Oh, CBD, you mean?
Yeah, all the flavored stuff, they don't know what's in it.
Oh, yeah, but even the ones that say that they're non-nicotine, they still have like less than one percent, but they still come up positive for nicotine, so...
Yeah, they can.
Okay.
Yeah. But if you wanted to look into stronger regulations, we could definitely work together on that for tobacco products.
Uh, now, have you reviewed, you reviewed our, uh...
Regulations?
Regulations on, I don't know, I know there's a few things we passed on, um, I don't know if you have any, since you just came on board, I don't know if you have any recommendations as far as, uh, moving forward with anything?
Well, I know I've worked with, uh, Norton a bit, and one of the things that they did is, in moments like this, like, so when the state was gonna pass the twenty-one or older, they really took advantage of the timeframe they had, and they kind of went across the board with the regulations. They did permit capping, flavor ban, uh, no blunt wraps, things like that. So those are things that you can look into, I'm, I think that you guys already did the blunt wraps. Where it's just the wrap itself, not the cigar, so.
Right.
But flavor bans would definitely be a strong and very useful thing to get tobacco products out of the youth's hands.
Hmm, yeah, especially with their marketing.
Cause that's the biggest driver of them.
With the names, the, some of the stuff is just the flavors, like strawberry, chocolate, whatever it is, some weird flavors and stuff.
Yeah, that's the biggest driver for them using and trying those products anyways. But it's definitely something to, uh, consider and I think it would be very, very useful to help lower youth use.
Okay, now, you are, just to make sure, you're doing your compliance checks within town, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I do the annual inspections, pricing surveys, compliance checks, sign note checks.
Okay. Anything, either one of you?
No, wel- welcome aboard, I think you're still working with Marilyn, she's working with you.
Yeah, she comes in as a consultant, yeah, she was in my office this week.
She does a great, she does a great job.
Yeah, she's great.
And I'm sure you'll do a great job as well.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Thank you, we'll be talking, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, next order of business, three B, update on two fourteen Pearl Street. The owner's here.
Yes, how we doing?
Good.
So I cleaned it out?
Wait, name it for the record while I'm on camera, so...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I apologize, uh, Paul Freeman.
Yep.
Um, so I had the health agent to go over and showed him that I cleaned the place out. Uh, we got any, all the furniture out, uh, there was some left in the yard, but I since put that in the dumpster. Uh, there was some sources of, that could, that could have caused rats and some, uh, uh, dog food and stuff. Got rid of all the feces, much as we could do without hot water.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think that's pretty much it, uh. Oh, I had, and I, I emailed to, uh, Rosalind the, the paperwork from Pest Control.
Oh, I was gonna ask that.
Um, I emailed that to her probably three or four weeks ago.
All clear of, uh, them too?
Yep. Um, so really, my next step is lift the, if you can, uh, possibly lift the, um, the order of, uh, of condemning, you know, uh, and then probably move to get an electrical permit and get the electrical service straightened out and go from there.
Okay.
So hopefully it'll be...
Also, you're ready to someone, for someone to come out there, Aaron?
Yeah.
Um, I guess we'll let you set up a date that's convenient for everyone and...
Yeah, so Jim and I went out and walked through and it was ninety percent done, there was some furniture on the lawn. Went in the upstairs apartment, the tenants had moved out and there was just piles of stuff everywhere.
That's all.
But there's nothing that I would consider a health hazard in the house anymore, all that's been removed, so. Um, I wouldn't have any problems lifting the health order at this point in time, assuming the rest of the stuff isn't in the dumpster like he says, so.
Just when you're, when you get a chance, just drive by or whatever.
Yep.
Yeah, the first, the first dumpster was gone too, so that's the one with the stuff that was in it that was any, any, uh, you know, contract ruins or anything like that, so that's been long gone.
But we could, we could keep the health order on and allow them to rehook up the electric and until, you know, until the electric's on, we really don't want people living in the house anyway, so.
Basically, I mean, uh, no electric, no hot water, that's a condemnable condition, so, but, I, the order could be amended to, you know, hey, we understand, we understand, you gotta get in there to do X, Y, and Z with the electrical.
Yeah.
You know, basically just say it's, it's unfit for your human habitation at this time.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I just, I just want you guys to know that I'm trying to do the right thing and make it, make it clean and...
Yeah, that's fine, appreciate it.
I mean, the electric is a fire hazard, so that was the reason why it was, the wires were cut.
Absolutely.
Right.
Yeah.
So obviously that needs to be corrected before we can turn it on and then, yeah.
I think they were stealing, weren't they? Yeah, they were, I would say.
Um, that's, uh, the electrical department inspector can deal with that, so anyhow, um...
We'll get it all cleaned up.
Um, do you want to amend the order at this point? Uh, since we're not gonna meet for two weeks and I think you want to...
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, nobody has an issue with me getting electrovobs, to get a, electrician out there and get an electrician, right, that would...
Since he wants to...
Sorry. Alright, okay, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. Yeah.
Alright, good. We could, we could have it as a, the health agent's discretion, if he, as, as he's moving along, just be in contact with, uh, Todd.
Yeah, we do that too.
And he has, and that's in Jim, he's been letting us know what's going on, but...
Yeah. Cause we don't wanna wait a couple of weeks.
But the health order right now says nothing, so we just need to make sure it's okay to get in and do electricity, so.
Yeah, after it's just back...
It's really no occupancy, right, until these orders are corrected?
Yeah, yeah.
So, so you just plug away with no occupancy?
Yeah, 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 exactly.
If you want, first off, I'll make a motion that, uh, in regards to the, the health order, or condemnation order for, uh, two fourteen Pearl Street, that, um, an order remains, however, it's for no occupancy until all issues are corrected.
So, I guess when I get it completely done, I'll just, I'll just get a new occupancy for it.
Alright, motion made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all in fulls, good, good luck.
Yeah, once, once everything's all set and Jim's all set with every, all the work, electrical plumbing, whatever's gotta be done, and Todd's all set, we'll just issue a correction order that lifts, lifts the condemnation, it'll be all set, then you can do what you gotta do with it.
Awesome, you guys have a great night.
Take care.
Thanks for coming. Do you need something else? We just hanging up?
Yeah.
What a good sport.
Moving on to, uh, three C, update on Beverly Street Health Order and barn permit. Well, I know Todd and Jim just went out there, Stacy's not here tonight, I also know that we have, we allowed them to keep the, the mother and...
There are two mothers.
Two mothers, and whatever you call the little ones.
Two mothers and... Yeah.
To stay there until such time they're weaned, and then to remove them from the property.
It goes in November, right?
Yeah, when you went out there, what did you observe?
However, we also have, they have to get filed for a barn permit and pay the transfer station fee.
There was an inspection, right?
Right.
And they haven't done any of those too. And, uh, I haven't been out there recently, but we, I think we did receive the call that the goats are still there, but I forget when the date was that they were supposed to be going out.
I think I, I read the minutes, wasn't it supposed to be September, or October, I don't know, I mean...
No, that was November first.
No, but Stacy was supposed, uh, Stacy was supposed to go out and do it, the quick inspection.
Oh, right, 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 right.
It'd be on the meeting minutes, when she was supposed to go out.
Hey, Stacy...
Problem is, we can't give her any permits until she pays a fifteen dollar transfer station fee.
Right. Plus a twenty-five dollar wait fee now, cause it's been so long since she bounced it, so.
Yeah, and, um...
Does anybody spoke to her?
Stacy was supposed to have talked to her, but, you know...
Have to wait till we have Stacy.
She's been gone for a week in Virginia, so we haven't...
Yeah.
Haven't talked to her about it, we can follow up with...
Well, just make a motion that we table us until Stacy can provide us an update.
Second, we put more...
So then...
Not close at all.
No, it's, there's no hook, uh, latch on it, so it just keeps opening.
Oh, yeah?
Hmm.
Okay, I'm up to speed.
Well, I, I think, future, well, we got the motion, I, I'll act, we'll, we'll act on the motion, motion made, second, is stable, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose, okay. I'll bring it up next meeting, my thoughts and, um... Just probably have to make it, get rid of all the animals without the barn permit, and then it's kinda silly to chase that small amount of money, but that's what we gotta do. Alright, where we at? Bailey Street Barn Permit, uh, Bailey Street, uh, someone has a cow. Again, um, it's confined to a small space, we have learned that it's a bull.
A bull?
A bull, a bull, yeah. Okay, someone has a bull. And I guess, uh, it's become a nuisance from its, uh, mooing or whatever they do during the day and night when they're hungry. And, um, this was another person that was supposed to get a barn permit, and...
They also had chickens.
That's a tight, tight borders over there, right?
That's ridiculous, first.
Well, the lot is approximately point four acres, but what the cow has is like half the stage, what the, the bowl, the area, the pen for the, it's, it's a very small pen.
I think, um...
It's not, it's not legal for a horse, so...
And then it's, uh, the orders.
It actually was very clean, but it doesn't matter.
What are they doing with the, cause each, each barn permit should have some kind of manure plan, right?
That's part of them, the barn permit is the source of water and where you, what you're doing with the manure, yeah.
They expressed their intentions with this?
We, they have not replied to our request.
Not the good ones.
We, all we sent them was a, hey, you know, you have animals, thought, please apply for a barn permit, and that would have identified what kind of animals and the manure plan and all that, but they haven't, we haven't heard from them.
Maybe just a little more pressing from Stacy or who did it.
I think, I think down the road, we probably oughta meet with the, uh, Agricultural Commission and discuss, uh, what kinda animals will we allow in that dense of a district, maybe chickens or...
I, I understand it's a right to farm community, ho- however, there's certain minimum requirements, I mean, that, that's just healthy for an animal, and it's based, that size for a...
Right, exactly.
For a bull is completely...
At least one acre is what USD...
I'm thinking the only thing that should be allowed in the village is maybe chickens.
Yeah. I mean, it's mind-boggling.
Needs, needs exercise, needs to...
Want some chickens, find a, a bull and a, that's...
Even, even like, did it, did it have any kinda shelter?
Might need to make...
It's, yeah, it has a shed.
Cause even with the wind and stuff, they block themselves from, you wanna make sure that they're safe.
And to top it off, there's an in-ground pool on this property. So if the, if the bull gets out of its enclosure, there's likelihood it may go in the pool. So, uh, you know, it's, it's just, uh...
Or if it gets loose in general.
So we'll, we'll get Stacy out.
That little space?
On these things, uh...
Yeah, but what do we wanna do, I said, we sent them a letter saying file for barn permit and they ignored it.
Do they allow it to like go out of that little pen?
So do we send a help photo?
No.
And there's like chickens in there with it.
Yeah, well, we don't have a fine structure.
We do have a fine structure.
Well...
Well, we didn't, I mean, we could just, you know, help it, it means to get a permit.
It's, it's in a, yeah, I'll show you, and, uh, our regular fine structure has that, nuisances.
Yeah. Yep.
And I will go over it again and we'll get those fines from, uh...
Because the mooing is a nuisance, the chickens aren't the nuisance, but it's the, the noise and...
Yeah, but I think in the order, I mean, in, in our regs say, anyone that has control of a property must, um, keep it as sanitary and... But I think it says that, uh, something to the fact that they have to follow the regulations. It's a nice bar, a nice little area.
Oh, it's very clean, very, very nice.
No, I mean, like, they're a little barn area, just, but it's small.
If there was a goat in there, it would've been funny.
It's really small.
Yeah, for, for a bull.
Alright, you wanna table us till next meeting, then we'll figure it out if it's not taken care of?
I'd like, I'd like to pull up the USD regs and, or, uh, recommendations and maybe can...
You're right, exactly.
That, because...
Stacy was supposed to...
We're looking out for the welfare of the animal too, that, that...
Stacy was gonna talk to Bristol Aggie, um, cause they have information on this, but again, she's not here to give her update, but...
Yeah, worse as I know it, but not, I don't know much about cattle.
But in the time being, they should still apply for something, so you know.
A barn permit, yeah.
So I would settle that up, an order, order saying, it's a requirement in town to have a permit.
Send it certified mail.
Uh, failure to act is, will result in fines, may result in fines.
Are you making that a motion?
I am.
Second. All set, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, okay, we'll let you catch up.
Caught up.
Send, send it certified mail, give them like fourteen days or something to always make contact.
Give them till whatever the date of our me, next meeting is.
Yeah, that's why I said fourteen, you know, whatever.
Well, we gotta talk about our meeting schedule, but...
Alright. Talk to us about twenty-one seventy-six Pleasant?
Actually, it'd be fourteen days from receipt of the letter, that's why I sent it certified. It's not why they can't say we didn't get it.
A lot of stuff happens in this little town.
Twenty-one seventy-six Pleasant Street, um, you guys remember this house, this was, um, the one that we had to clean out? Uh, he's been living in a hotel, they have gone in and they have done an amazing amount of work. They have thrown out ninety-eight percent of the stuff that was in the house. Um, they've ripped out all the flooring and the kitchens and, and living room and, um, they rebuilt the back stairs, uh, they've inspected the furnace and the electric is, you know, they, they're doing everything they're supposed to do. Um, they said they were ready to move in, I went in there yesterday. The only thing is, because they ripped out the floors, we need to have like some kind of washable floor put back down in the kitchen before we can let them back in, so right now that's the only...
Yeah, right now, what, subfloor, like a plywood?
Yeah, the subfloor, well, the, uh, right now it's just the plywood, so they're gonna put a washable surface.
Okay. Yeah, they need something, yeah.
So that's the only thing left holding them back from moving in, so as soon as that's done, we can move in.
Wasn't there an area of the house that they boarded up, or they fixed that already?
There is, um... Sorry, this is annoying, um...
Take your time.
Yeah, you can always go back to the video.
Only have that.
That takes a while, huh?
Huh?
Let's go to the videotape.
Well, I was, I was gonna say the tape, or we could, we should get a recorder for nights like this.
Uh, this property is a three-family house. The first floor in the back is a, a single apartment, that is being boarded off and there's two entrances to that, they are not allowed to use that, go into that for any reason at this point in time. First floor is another, you, when you go upstairs and you go to the right, is another kitchen, bathroom, bedroom, and that's the, the third bedroom unit. That one's all clean and ready to go, and they say the, the, the front one is, it's the back one that is being blocked off and they, we will not allow them into there. They, they are gonna have to do some serious like building permit work in order to be able to get back into there.
And then you said the, something with the basement as well?
It is, uh...
Basement was packed?
It was, it's not anymore.
Oh, great, so...
Again, they threw out about ninety-eight percent of what was there.
So they're ready to move in?
I, it was something like twenty downstairs or something.
It's gonna be a single family, it's on record as a single family, so I don't know how it evolved to a three-family, but...
Well, they may not be able to get back to a three-family again.
It's not a...
They may be able to be a two-family or whatever, and that's through the building department process too for some of this, so.
Yeah.
Right now, we're more important with getting the person back into their home.
Nice.
So...
Well, moving on to three F, not state and health concerns, which is the ongoing problem with, uh, I don't know, I call them rats, I guess that's what we can call them. Since our last meeting, we discussed this, um, some, uh, snap traps have been purchased. Tom Ferry was, uh, looking for where to put them, and basically I think it's up there in back of, uh, Beverly Street where that road is. Um, cause I haven't heard from Stacy or Tom lately regarding this, uh, did he put any out that you know of?
Well, knowing that Stacy was gonna be gone for a week, I don't think he wanted to set the traps with nobody to check on. And so I think we held off on setting them until Stacy's back, cause it's gonna take every day, somebody's gonna be there checking on it.
Smart.
So, um, and, you know, I can do it a couple of days and Stacy can do it a couple, but without her here, it would've been difficult, so. I, I don't think the traps have been set as of this point in time.
Okay.
Probably for our next meeting, I guess?
Try it again, yeah. Okay, we have, uh, finally, I believe we have our kennel license renewal letter, and our dog license renewal letter, uh, finished. Been reviewed by Town Council, he's happy with it, and, uh, as far as the legalities of it go, everything is in order. Uh, I know that Rod's, I sent him out to all of us, I don't know if you've had a chance to read them, the, uh, letters on kennel...
I didn't get to read it.
License renewal, or the...
I did not, I don't think I got it.
Do we have copies? If we do, we can pass them out, we can table this, this isn't gonna be effective till next year anyway.
Yeah, I don't think I've, I know I didn't see it.
But we can, we can act on it next meeting.
They should be both in, in there. Well, it's a one's kennel and one's dog's kennel?
They were attached, right? One kennel and, and one dog?
Yeah, I don't know, she put it all together.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Reason we've come up with this is because most of our reminder letters go unnoticed or unresponsive. Uh, we estimate there's four to six hundred dogs within the town that are probably not licensed. Um, we don't know that for fact, but that's, that's an estimate. They, every year, they have to send out three to four hundred follow-up letters at fifty-five cents a pop. So, we, we decided to put something together that had a little more teeth, that may or may not bring the people in, but, um, it was written in accordance with Mass General Law, uh, as far as violations and sections and so forth go. You were right, the only thing we need to do is, uh, adopt a regulation citing, uh, this particular section and the fines involved. It does not have to go to town meeting to adopt Mass General Law, we just need a regulation.
Yeah, cause our regulations read as...
You wanna write it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it just says, uh, um... Cause the way it's written already, it says, um, rules and regu, no, bylaws and regulations, I think it already covers it, but I'll, I'll put something, yeah.
I don't know, yeah, we can follow up on it, it'll give you time to look at the letters and, uh, is that alright, are we gonna go?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause it, it falls under our non-criminal disposition.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right.
And then when you read non-criminal disposition, it says bylaws and regulations, so all our regulations fall under that, and any bylaws falls under that, it's pretty much a blanket. If you didn't have that in place, the word regulation, you wouldn't be able to find for a regulation.
Yeah, I'll have to review that also, but...
It looks pretty good. You can hold on to those copies.
I read it.
Those two, two of them.
I did.
They look faster, you did.
Oh, yeah. Actually, when I, why can I keep it on?
Yeah, absolutely, that's yours, thanks.
So are we doing anything to approve the letters, or are we gonna wait till the regulation's in place before we do the letters?
I, I, like I said, that, that's in place already, I could just...
Well, we can approve the letters, if, if, they both wrote them.
Make a motion to approve the letters.
Make a motion to approve the letters as, as...
Make a motion to approve the letters as as prepared by town council?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the letters, uh, regarding kennel license renewal and dog license renewal, that was approved by town council, all's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that motion carries, thank you very much.
So we did G and H together?
Yes.
Effectively?
Yes. Temporary food permit fee waiver request for Audrey Wood. Who's, uh, Ms. Audrey Wood?
Ms. Audrey Wood is Creative Confections. Um, this woman is the one who does chocolate that she pours in the molds and caramel and toffee. So her food is, um, not TCS.
Right.
And, uh, she is in Norton and she's got her residential kitchen license there, and she's provided us with a homeless insurance for insurance. We made her get allergen awareness, I believe, and she went and got her allergen awareness.
Yep.
Um, so, but what she said to us was, well, you know, I'm paying whatever it was, fifty dollars to be a vendor there, thirty dollars, whatever the fee was to be there, she goes, I mean, your fee's thirty five, she says, I'd have to sell like a hundred dollars in products just to to break even. And she was asking for us to wait and reduce the fee, um.
What was the event?
It's November third.
Where?
Oh, the fee for participating is eighty dollars, is, um, at Zara Rougeos, the, um, of the Lions November Rock Festival.
Okay.
So, um, so she's asking for a reduction, in her words are, it's a one day event and the fee for participating is already eighty dollars, considering the majority of my candy is priced at less than fifteen dollars, it'll take quite a few sales just to cover the cost of being there, for these reasons, I'm requesting reduction in the fee. And I told her we would discuss it at our.
Is Arujos paying a fee for the food?
For the event, no, just the vendors, all the vendors that are gonna be there.
I think the only way that would work if Arujos or someone did it as a blanket, like one.
Like case the Dyson did.
Almost like that, besides that, if, who's gonna, who's gonna inspect that and how, who's gonna pay for that person to go out?
Well, that's the, that's the thing, so you've got, um, you know, actually, I don't know how many vendors it's gonna be.
So just say, I'm thinking, just say Rougeos said like this, I'm gonna have like five vendors there and I'll pay the one day event, it's temporary event, then while you're out there, you're inspecting all of them, but besides.
But we would need to have everybody's allergen for the individuals.
Everyone have to be lined up.
It's like we do with survey, they paid one fee for the event and they inspected everybody.
How many food vendors do they have?
I don't think it was many, I wanna say last year was only.
They always have a couple, right?
A couple, yeah, like two.
But bes- besides that, they're, if they're charging eighty and the town still has to cover you to go out there and inspect.
That's not our problem.
I know. It's really.
I think we're go- we're stepping into, uh.
I I bet this was was outside a year and organization was charging three hundred and sixty five to three hundred and seventy five dollars for a vendor to be there, and then a temporary part was twenty five dollars. Whatever the the vendor charges, that that's between, that has nothing to do with us, that's, you know, so if Arujos charges eight, that that's between her and them, that's completely separate, you know, but.
Because the town's gotta pay you to go out.
Right.
To do the inspection.
And unless one of you gets.
And it's on a, and it's on a weekend.
Yep.
Right? So just imagine.
Are there other food vendors that are gonna be up there, do we know?
Now's it now, no, but the other, the other thing that's here is we got Pop Culture is gonna be at the Dyson Fall Show at Bristol Aggie, and there's supposed to be five vendors there. Supposed to be two food trucks, somebody's doing fried dough, somebody's doing hot dogs.
You can see how they did it last year.
No, she's not a nonprofit or anything, correct?
No, neither one of these are, no.
No.
But she's the same way, and stuff's all pre-prepared and all that, and it's.
But that's the same thing, you still gotta.
I I know, I'm just saying they both were kinda the same way, like going, hey, you know, the fees are getting higher and higher for these vendors to be at these places, and they were just saying, is there some way you can give me a break? So, put it in front of the board, that's all.
Yeah, I unfortunately think you can't, unless the only way, if the board ever agreed to do it like the Taste of Dayton, one, one establishment covers all that. That's the only way, but even then, you're gonna be there a lot longer doing those inspections.
I'm thinking of.
What's gonna take one hour normally, you're gonna be there walking around all the vendors.
That was a Dyson event put on by the friends of the library and other Dyson organizations.
So that's why I was like that, yeah.
So, you know, these here, just going into bad territory, I think would.
I guess it's a price of doing business.
And we're not waiting for nonprofits or giving them money like the boost, you know.
With one permit, we should even look at that and say.
Scholarships, so.
We'll give them a break, but we can't charge, I don't think we should continue charging the same fee. We should probably, you know, it's whatever thirty five dollars in the beginning, then five dollars each vendor or something like that, you know, so, but. As far as these two go, uh, now Pop Culture, well, let's work on A for S, the request for Audrey Wood. Uh, is there a motion up or down on that one?
Yeah, I make a motion to deny the request.
Second it.
Uh, motion made and seconded, any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll also participate and say aye, I'll oppose, motion carries.
Three J, Pop Culture, it's the same question, but that's at the Dyson Fall Show, like say there's gonna be five vendors there.
What's, what are they, I, they just there as a food vendor, are they giving the money back, or what's the deal with that?
I know they're a food vendor, I don't know if they're giving any money to.
I mean, you'd reduce the rate to the nonprofit if it was the money going back to the school.
Yeah, I don't know how that works.
Scholarships or something, you know what I mean?
We can get an answer to that, if you wanna, say, make a motion that way, so that we can find out and and then do it, because that show is next Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Does any of the profit go to?
Yeah, I don't know.
The school?
I'm I'm sure they're paying the school.
Was that a?
Just for space, probably.
Right, there's probably a space vendor is probably.
If they're giving a percentage back to the school or Boosters Club or something like that for scholarship money or whatever.
Yeah.
Then I do it, reduce rate, but not free.
So we don't have another meeting before the event, so we gotta make a motion.
What about until? There is another meeting before that?
No, there isn't, it's next Friday, so it's only forward business days away.
Yeah, and I guess last year we didn't do anything, right, it was just the way it was. I'll make a motion to deny the request at this time.
I'll s- I'll second it.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Okay, that that request is denied.
So we can sign it, we're gonna, once we get the check, I'm hurt, we'll write it, but nobody's gonna be here, though, um.
You can ask her for more information next year.
Yeah.
So I'm asking you to sign it, when we get the check, we'll write the fee in and then issue it, but you're not gonna be here before next. Unless anybody wants to go and inspect it next Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Yeah.
And if Friday's more of a Saturday, Saturday's more of a food death, so.
Talk to you more about it, I can, I can probably go Saturday.
Hmm, yeah.
Yeah, these people, when they request, they should come in and talk to us, I think, you know, and, uh, but.
Yeah, but we can suggest that to them next time.
Hmm.
Was there two signatures or just?
Just one for the one.
I don't know if you have public empire or.
You you up, uh?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to take the agenda out of order, this gentleman.
Okay.
Second.
We don't want you to wait forever.
Yeah.
No, no, that's fine, you know, you know, you guys have a bunch of stuff of each other, um, I'm actually here. Um, I'll have some of the pictures for you guys. I love the nice pictures here. However.
Uh, name for the record?
Um, George Gulat. So I'm on here on, um, I can't find the pictures, I'm sorry, guys.
Yeah, take your time.
I just took them on my way here. Jeepers creepers. I'm not a.
It'll be the last picture.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not a technical type guy.
Well, he's doing that, you can read it.
Well, I don't even.
That's the thing, he already read.
Okay.
No, anyway, if you may not even use, I'm on, I'm here on behalf of, um, George Gulat, he wasn't able to appear tonight, however, he lives.
So you were George Gulat?
I am not, I'm here on behalf of George Gulat.
Okay.
Um, he just wasn't able to be present tonight.
Your name for the record?
Robert Pattingill, um, George is a son of.
Okay.
Um, he lives at three oh three Prospect Street, and, um, Tony Rogic is attempting to, he has already purchased property that went to auction, um, adjacent to his property, which is on directly the corner of Brook Street now. We.
Wanna hold that thought for a minute?
Absolutely.
You gotta stay as and grab the plan, then you have it to look at, because he's.
We have, we have a file ongoing with this, so.
Yeah, sure.
We'll probably be able to give you.
We won't be able to make any.
We can't, we can just.
We can listen to you, we can't make decisions, because he wasn't.
No, no, absolutely.
Just say you know.
Yep, uh, he was very concerned that he wasn't able to appear tonight.
It's fine, we can, we can hear what's going on, then probably put on the next meeting, we can't make any decisions, because it's not on the agenda.
Well, that's not gonna make me look good for my father in law.
Well, you're, you're doing a good job so far.
It's it's the law, unfortunately, state, state law. A joke. Oh, sorry, yeah.
I mean, he'll be here for the following meeting.
Okay.
So these plans have been filed with our office about twenty, thirty days ago, so he claims, and my, my review has not been completed yet, um, actually, I kinda finished review, I got, I wrote a letter, it came in on September sixteenth.
Alright.
It's just new construction.
Not familiar with the.
Have.
Where it is, right?
Are you guys familiar where it is on the plan?
Yeah.
Okay, here I actually have some, um, pictures, this originally was a wooded area. Are you guys familiar with this entire situation?
Um, we don't.
Oh, okay.
Do you know where it is? I know where it is, okay, we will.
I know where it is, and that's all I know.
Alright, so this was, uh, entirely wooded area, and I'll submit this picture here, so you guys can fasten along. And, um, this went to auction, it was sold for under ten thousand dollars or whatever. However, this is wetlands, actually it bucks the property owned by, um, Somerset Water Department. He went in, cleared all the property, as a result of him clearing the property over the past, I don't know, six, eight months, now we have runoff, or he has runoff, I'm sorry, I was speaking on behalf of George, has runoff that's going into his property. So if you're on the, on the corner of Brooklyn Elm.
Under the North though.
On the north side, the runoff naturally goes down, just south of that approximately a hundred, hundred twenty five yards is the river. And here's the runoff that is now heading into the river, um, here's some additional pictures of that runoff for you guys.
So he cleared trees within the wetlands issue?
Yes, he did, um, we also have an additional issue on top of that.
So just to interrupt for a second.
Sure.
All the runoff, the wetlands issues, that's for the Conservation Commission.
No, I understand, I was.
So, I'm just, I'm just clear, you'll have to bring this up in thumb as well, because if they went outside the scope of the.
No, absolutely, we're just trying to daughterize Cross Teas.
Actually, I I believe they're meeting tonight.
They have seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
Right here.
I was supposed to come back, I was just advised to come here.
Okay.
So, like, again, I'm indirect jucting only because he filed for a park gap, he was told he had to stay over a hundred feet away with the parks, which you can see the test holes were done outside of a hundred feet from the wetlands, as they were delineated, I'm not saying the wetlands right along.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Where they were delineated, we stayed over a hundred feet away, the soils are acceptable, but you can see that the water table is very shallow, it was like less than two feet, and, um, the whole thing is a big giant mound, so. So that's, that's the involvement I have had in it, I believe they went to the zoning board, uh, for the location of the house, and, um, I think they're filed with the Conservation already, and the hearing might be tonight, or it might have already gone past, I don't know exactly, I think.
And the Conservation is probably discussing this tonight.
Yeah, I think it's tonight, so.
Alright, at seven thirty, um, here's just one of the issue that, um, has concerned my father in law, George Gulat, is that since the land has been cleared, Tony Rogic has also brought in, I can bring it over to you, if, man.
I'm gonna say this is Conservation again, because I know.
Oh, sure, okay.
I know what you're gonna say.
So he's already brought in Phil onto this property, oh, I'm sorry, onto this property, and I I took these on the way here.
Yeah.
So he's already brought Phil in, and, um, this is completely characteristic of, which I I shouldn't say is kind of biased, but the the, it's what he does, and he's already backfilling that property as a result of the wetlands. Um, and even so.
What would that be over here, probably?
He's. May I see them out?
Oh, right in here.
That's an isolated wetland, then there are wetlands at the rear of the lot that get adjacent to the river.
So where's the corner of Brooklyn Elm, alright, so Elm, so he's already backfilled, I've actually married, um, mentioned it, it's seventy feet this way and forty feet this way, so he's backfilled this corner, which is actually pushing the water onto this.
Well, that's where the septic's gonna go.
Oh, no, I, no, I completely understand that, but what I'm saying is.
Is he doing?
He's already backfilling.
He's being a cooler, right?
This plan, I've completed my review, and the letter was gonna be going out tomorrow for my review, I do need some changes to the plan.
But he said, he said there's being work done already here.
All he's doing is dumping Phil.
Yes, he is, but as a result of that, it's.
Not in the wetlands, though.
So.
In the wetlands, or what, maybe, again, I'm not.
So, hold on one second, just, so when we did the parks, there was no evidence of filled wetlands in the area where we were doing our park testing, if there were, then this would have been a different.
Which the park tests are actually literally like ten feet off the road.
They are close to the street.
Yes, they are, it's right off the road.
He doesn't, so he was the one.
Yeah.
No, no, that's fair.
Um, but like, again, if we didn't indicate, find any evidence of filled wetlands, um, and we were over a hundred feet from the flag wetlands, if there's an issue with the the wetland being bigger than what's shown on the plan, or or what, and we've got evidence of it, that's for the Conservation Commission to, um, decide, I don't know if they went to any MRA process to confirm the wetlands.
Any, any of this work, like clearing the trees within the wetlands, the possibility of dropping Phil, concern that they might be pushing the film and starting to fill, or possibly could fill wetlands, all that's conservation, we have no jurisdiction over that, so.
That is perfectly fine, I was unaware of that, I was advised to come here at this time.
Yep, it's at seven thirty with the Conservation, I mean, this is definitely, I mean, just looking at these pictures, there there's definitely looks like there's some wetlands issues going on here, so.
Yeah, I mean, even prior to his Phil, his sun pump might go off and it's stolen, now the sun pump in the basement is like constantly running because he's dropped. You know, the, I think it's thirteen dump truck loads of fill in there, which I don't believe, and it's completely characteristic of Tony Rogic.
But Todd, I don't understand why he's dropping Phil when he's gotta do the site work first.
The stumps aren't even.
Where the perk is, like, before we issued the permit, there should be no work. I see you getting rid of trees and stumps, but to bring in Phil.
But there's still.
He's saying it's right around here, I don't know if that's the case.
Yeah, that's, that's beyond us.
This is where you're gonna be removing.
Right, so he's still gonna have to dig out everything, if he piles it right on top of the septic, he's gonna move it all the way to dig the hole, so he's just.
I don't understand why he's bringing it in to remove it.
That's a question only you can answer.
That's hard.
Yeah, sure, I I expect him to be here.
It's not illegal for him to dump dirt to move it again, it's designed to be a damage. He may be at seven thirty for the Conservation.
I will gladly come back, I mean.
Yeah, I I.
Geez, he.
It sounds.
He built four houses on.
We don't, we just don't.
Marshaling on Pleasant Street, and now, I don't know, I'm just trying to help my father in law.
It looks like your pitches might indicate the wetland is bigger than what's on that plan, but that's.
Oh, absolutely.
Only for the Conservation Command.
Also, we had, um, representative, I do have the information in my vehicle, um, of some endangered species that were in that area as well.
Conservation.
Um, yeah, so, come back at seven thirty.
They'll be here, yeah.
For conservation.
Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
It's out of our jurisdiction.
Hey, you gotta keep the wife happy, you know?
Take care.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate the info, because at least then, you know, should this go forward and-
Alright, thank you, guys.
Does the soil board get involved if he doesn't have a permit and he's moving Phil? Depends how much, though.
Yeah.
So anyhow, this, this review was gonna go up tomorrow, is that finished?
Saw big zatla, is that the one where, he said there was a house there before?
There was an old foundation, I saw it, there was remnants of a foundation there, so, I'm guessing that might have been part of his arguing with the zoning board.
Was that the house or a barn? You know, he knows what was there back there.
Yeah, all you can see is stones in a square now, so.
There must be some record, right?
It's, it was an old foundation, but.
Out of your control too.
Yep, yep. Back to three K?
Yep.
You having fun yet, Seth?
Animal project update, you have any information on that, or we're gonna wait for Stacy?
Stacy or Jim, and they're both, both gone.
Okay, we'll table that one also, till next time.
Let's pull your calendars.
Alright, upcoming border health meeting schedule, I think most of the things that are, half of the things that are on here tonight are gonna be brought up.
It doesn't latch.
Our next meeting? Um, hopefully we'll have a lot more information with our animal control officer here. Any more public input? Alright, expenditures?
Wait a minute, are we doing a meeting skip?
We're doing a schedule. Are we doing one monthly?
I just talked about it.
But did you mention that we're doing it twice a month, or one monthly?
Oh, that, that thought of it, yes, uh-
In order to meet October twenty-third.
Yeah, we gotta do that one.
Actually, after the first of the year, we're probably gonna go on one.
Oh, it's September twenty-fifth. Right, oh, we already did September, that's fine.
Yeah, we're in October.
I will probably not be here, never mind, never mind, long meeting, never mind.
We're, we're second and fourth?
We're second and fourth, so if you look ahead at the calendar-
November, December, or October.
Right, November, the fourth of, the fourth, third, uh, Wednesday for November is the night before Thanksgiving, so I will not be here.
Yep.
Right, and, and the fourth is Christmas, so we wouldn't be doing that.
So after the first of the year, I'll send, I'll send a notice to the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
Um.
We'll basically be doing-
What did you, it's basically-
For the next two months anyway, just because the holidays, so.
Yeah, so because of the holidays, we're doing-
Right, but you're suggesting go to one meeting a month, moving past that, for January, February, March, January.
I, I don't want, I would prefer to send a letter saying effective January, we'll go on-
Well, I think it's gonna be effective.
Well, you could do effective January, because we might still have two, in case something comes up.
Well, two regular meetings, regular meetings. Regularly scheduled, and then any, any important business that comes to emergency situations, situations, you know, but the regular meeting, I mean, certainly if, you know, say two fourteen Pearl Street needs something, I have no problem scheduling a meeting outside to handle that specific issue. Say, you know, even say we have bids coming in for hazardous waste day. If it's, if it, anything that's time sensitive, I have no problem coming in and handling, you know-
Emergency orders, whatever it is.
Fifteen, thirty minutes, handle that issue, but regular meetings, you know, hearing the reports.
The only thing I'd like to see is to get by the operator, procedures and policies manual that we're gonna create.
But that might be workshops or whatever, but that's not a regular meeting, so to speak. So right now, if we follow the regular schedule, it's gonna be October twenty-third, November thirteenth, December eleventh.
Yes.
And then if we stick to one a month and come January, that's why, it might be come November first, it's one meeting a month because of the holiday, but whatever, it doesn't matter.
The way, the way the next two months fall, it's once.
But do we wanna have another meeting in October, do we wanna stick with one on the twenty-third, or do we wanna go to the thirtieth or something like that, you know?
I would say we have to have a tw- twenty-third.
I think we have twenty-third, I think just because Stacy wasn't here, Jim wasn't here, it's a lot of tabled things that we just can't take action on or discuss.
Okay.
No, don't be sorry, man.
You guys don't mind if we go to one meeting a month, right?
No.
After January.
I, I'd rather, I mean, a lot of the, the general business, I'd rather have one meeting that's a little longer than, than two meetings, you know, that are shorter.
But again, in, in case of emergency, we could-
I have no problem coming in, you know, special circumstances, emergency situations, whatever it may be.
Okay, so I'll let it to them and say, one, one meeting a month, and then please note, because of the holidays in November, December, it'll be the same.
We'll think of something, okay. Yeah, I was thinking of meeting schedule, but that's the agenda, I was thinking of the wrong thing, yeah, so.
Maybe all kind of come up with some current ideas, and then we'll, after- But right now, we're sticking to our current schedule, which is October twenty-third, and then November thirteenth.
Yes.
Yeah. Thirteen?
Yeah, because I've been in the seven, the six, so, yeah, and so we'll stick to those, and then we can put together some kind of memo, and you guys can look at it, so.
Okay.
Public input, none? Payroll and bills?
Payroll and bills, we, uh, oh, on the pink bags, we made thirty-three dollars and thirty-one cents. So, payroll was-
Imagine what we saved on, on taxes.
On the tonnage. Yeah, they give us the tonnage here somewhere.
I think you guys made that on me alone.
Uh, we bought some business cards this past month, uh, it was a ton and a half, it was three thousand three hundred pounds, so.
So, take that thirty-three and change and add it to the tonnage rate, too.
We'll add a hundred dollars a ton or whatever, right, so.
And it's out of the waste.
We bought the raft wraps, we bought, um, some new business cards, now that we have new email addresses and phone numbers and address, so kinda have to do it. And then included for Laurie, she got cards also, and we have payroll as a total of five thousand one hundred and forty-eight. And, yeah, that was nine fourteen, then for the end of September, we had forty-two hundred in payroll and seventy-one thousand in bills paid, because that included gorgeous trucking, and we had a bag, uh, delivery of bags from Mansfield Paper to the tune of fifteen grand? Sixteen grand, somewhere in that vicinity?
That was another horror shot.
Yeah, we're gonna fill that. They tried to deliver the bags here, instead of at the D P W, and they wouldn't bring them down there, and Tom Ferry's like, well, we don't have any, um, forklift here, so good luck, and the guy's like, oh.
Are you leaving us?
No, I'll pick it up.
Any of these, the, you going to the conference, M H O A?
No, that was, that was gonna, we were gonna talk about that.
Okay.
Under agent's report.
Ready?
I'm ready. So we have no animal control.
No, I'll tell you, jump report.
Alright, um, I had a bunch of little things, uh, number one, um, I went out to inspect the, um, craft show at Titan Community Church. And I was there doing jam suite or whatever, and, um, then I said, well, they got all this food in the kitchen, and they take a quick peek in the kitchen. And they were serving, um, stuff out of crock pots, and there were hot dogs and baked goods and everything else, and I said, well, you know, you got a kitchen here, and I'm like, hey, and I look around, and I started looking around, and there were some things that were a little bit lacking, like no hand sink labeled, no hot water, you know, that kind of stuff. So I told the lady, I said, you need a permit from us, be a kitchen, and sent her the application, and she's putting it together, and I think she had to take her allergen awareness, and they gotta get the hot water tank fixed, but they have no other events coming right away. So, that's that, we know Saint Nicholas also has a permit for the kitchen, but there's other kitchens, there's other churches in town, and I don't know if anybody knows that there's kitchens in them, and if we should be doing anything about any of them. Generally, we, I've always made churches get a food permit, I usually just inspect them once a year, because it's minimal use and what it is. Um, generally not open for public consumption, um, and I've generally not charged a fee for it. But it's just so that way we have the information on record, and we do put eyes on it once a year. I have no problems waiving the fees and all that, um, but I mean, like this event here, they were serving food to the public.
And they advertised?
And it was advertising.
Normally when they advertise, I, I would follow meds or lead there, when they don't, potluck events are allowed.
Well, that's, that's like in-house, yeah.
Yeah, so-
It's like your own family.
Even though they have their kitchens, if they after mass go downstairs and have a social hour, it's off limits. But however, if they advertise to the public and are selling to the public, that's when, um, it's gray, where you can have them either do the same thing, um, since they're nonprofit. Post something saying it's hasn't been inspected, um, and, and list all the allergens, or get a, or get a full-blown permit. But you'd have to really find out who's doing what.
I say, if, if they have a kitchen, just make them get a permit, I have no, again, I have no problem, all the churches waive the fee, it's just- So what I'd like to do is send a letter out to all the churches in town, saying, hey, if you got a kitchen, you need a permit, um, if you wanna waive the fee, you know, write a letter to us requesting the fee be waived, and, and, and we can move forward. That's all I was looking for, I wasn't saying, hey, I wanna shut everybody down or anything like that, I think we need to send them a letter and get them.
Yeah, and then put it there.
And if they're on a well, we gotta get the well water tested.
Is it a public event, or just for the congregation?
Right, like I say, I don't know what all these churches do for events, so.
Can ask, yeah, we'll, we can find out, because if they say, we only do social hour at, at the, for, for in-house people.
So.
Okay.
That was easy, um, the Falmouth Conference, I started going through, what was at the conference, Roz and I went through what things that I would wanna do and not do, and I started marking with red for what I wanted to do, and a lot of the stuff, it didn't, didn't interest me as much as I thought, um, there was a few things I got with the red asterisks or whatever, that I'm like, oh, I would definitely do that, but there was only like one asterisk, the rest of them were, alright, I didn't wanna do that one or that one, so I guess I'm going to that one. It didn't interest me, I think I'd rather just do the holiday and taunton for the, the annual thing there, um, is what I'm saying, so. Unless you guys see something maybe that you think I should be there for, uh, Roz and I didn't see. I wasn't overly thrilled, you know what I did, I did the Yankin Conference this year, and thought it was awesome. Really? Because in the past, you've said they've been- Yeah, and I was kinda, and I looked at what they were offering, and I was like, and I went, and I was blown away how good it was, so.
Yeah, I, I really, as far as I go, I didn't-
I looked at that, and I kinda thought the same thing, I need a couple extra hours for my R S, so. See, I don't need the L C R S, I need them for the C S I, and it's five a year, the taunton holiday, and we get that too. But I'm just going for one day.
Yeah, if I go, I'm gonna go one day also.
I still gotta sign up for this thing.
So you guys okay with, well, that's why, and it's a long drive and all that, so if you guys are okay with me not going, as I, you said, no, no. Okay. Oh, we have had a couple people ask us if the border health is going to cancel Halloween this year because of triple E.
No.
No? Personal responsibility, you feel strongly that you don't wanna be out? I'm okay, I, I don't, I don't believe in it either, but if, I can't, I figured if, if the board says it, then I can, um, so, uh, per, per test records, Roz has been making great strides, we're almost done with perk records, we've got like one year left for putting them all in the files. Except for prior to nineteen ninety, and so that's kind of not a top priority, she's working on pumping records now. We had, for the landfill inspection, the company doing it, said, hey, we wanna see all the real reports, we spent a couple hours in the vault, going through and pulling out everything. It was all over the place, and we organized it, now we're scanning it all in, so that it's all in one place instead of in cargo boxes. Um, border health regulations, we approved them, um, but we haven't mailed them into the state yet. Um, and so, uh, it just kinda hit me that we hadn't done that, um, I think it was- Robert Casper and Wes Bridgewater said, oh, did you mail those in?
And pretty much they, they file it, and that's it.
Right, so what we need to mail it in, so Roz has got the letter, so we're gonna mail that in.
And I, and I will make that binder, all it is, grab all our stuff and put it in a binder.
Yeah, we just look for how many, uh,
Just all the tabs.
Paragraphs we want, you know, what, what top one.
Well, I'll show you what the, I'll send, I'll send them something, what Roz looks like, and Lego, we have all the tabs, it's pretty, you pretty much just-
Pretty much, yeah.
Flip it to the tab and use as your resource.
Yeah, but it's, we just, we gotta send it into the state to be recovered, um, do you wanna talk about the, um, the invoices and, um?
Yeah, it was, uh, it was brought up, we, we could, um, the expenses for the incident on Maple Swamp, was somewhere in the vicinity of four thousand dollars.
It's three thousand three hundred.
Three thousand, okay.
Yeah, Roz and I had them on.
Slightly over three thousand three hundred. Uh, we were asked how we felt about, uh, looking, seeking reimbursement from the owner of the property.
Yeah.
Uh, it's a touchy subject, but I don't, I kind of agree that the taxpayers of the town should not be responsible for the bills, which is what it's come down to.
I agree.
So, you good?
I agree.
So then I would entertain a motion to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that we seek reimbursement from the owner of the property, um.
For the Board of Health, the Board of Health or the Board of Selectmen to seek reimbursement?
Board of Selectmen seeks a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen that they seek. The town, through the Board of Selectmen, seeks reimbursement.
Some of it.
Second.
Okay, that motion made, second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Hold on.
Well, Roz would have had that done already, just kidding.
Yeah.
He gave me the thumbs up, he, he wanted to give me something else.
Got it, um. No. So if you guys remember, twenty-one seventeen Williams Street, the red barn at the corner of Main Street, um.
With the wall?
Yeah, with the wall, um, but the discussion earlier was whether or not it was repaired or not, because the building had two rooms that used as bedrooms, and we talked about it, they could be repaired. Um, since that point in time, they've now put the concrete on, and now they're putting up the two-story.
And it's separated, right?
It, it, there is some, it looks like there's a kind of gap, I don't know if that's supposed to be here, maybe, um.
It's about a four-foot gap between the barn and the house.
But the problem I have is that he's increasing the building from nineteen hundred and twenty-eight square feet to twenty-five hundred and eighty-nine square feet. It's a thirty-four percent increase in the square footage. The floor plans for the house show two bedrooms with three bathrooms. There's two bedrooms on the second floor, and two bathrooms on the second floor, and on the first floor is a kitchen, living room, bathroom, it's, it's an odd-
Two, two bedroom now?
Two bedrooms.
So I guess the only thing, instead of, we'll just, I'll have that de-restriction.
Yeah, well, we already have that.
So this way.
But it's, it's just that the house was bigger, and it's always still under the guise of a repair, I guess, it's, we're, we're, we've, we've gotten into the gray area.
Yeah, we are, but right now, we have it as restriction.
Restriction and then-
And, and, I'm trying to figure out, every time I drive by, where's that septic going?
So as you're coming down Main Street, and you come to the stop sign, there's a stone wall on your left, that wall's gonna be raised another two and a half feet higher, and the septic's gonna be right behind it.
Behind it?
Yes.
With the tall grasses?
Well, it's not tall grass now.
Oh, grass. Is that, no, I thought that was with the wetlands.
Well, it's between the wetlands and the wall.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not a whole lot of them, man. We go check it out, stop, you drive right by there.
I drive every day, when I look at it, I'm like, the house, the ba- barn looks nice, though, I'm sure the hot things-
Norway usually parks the, uh,
The walls are beautiful.
Equipment.
Yeah.
It's over in that corner.
That whole wall, they, they did an excellent job, just trying to figure out how that septic-
Yeah, they put the windows in today, it's more than a lot.
Um, so, I think that's all I have for agents, but, oh, I will point out, though, um, I did have, uh, somebody complain that I was taking two own review plans, um, specifically, and that I was, you know, making it difficult, because I was rejecting plans by engineers. And, uh, I'm just basically taking time to review the plans, and this one particular plan, I had it for two days, and I hadn't reviewed it yet. Um, there was another plan that I had had for like twenty days, um, but I, I'm doing them in the order they come in, and that's the way it works, so. I'm trying, I have a few other things to do besides review septic plants.
Some of these are held up.
Falling under the D E P guidelines, and, which I, I know you are. D E P has no timeline on reviewing plans. I meant as far as the- Oh, oh, for reviewing plans, yeah, but there's no timeline on how long it's supposed to take to review, they took that out, which is weird. False, but then you say that, complaining.
Yeah, but sometimes, you know. Really get to it, because a lot of times I open up the plan, but I get pulled away.
Finds a mush.
I know towns that, that have forty, that in their regulations, they say forty-five days, you will not hear from us for forty-five days.
Yeah.
Maybe that's what we-
So, once they get caught up, you know, and, and, then I, I'm usually pretty good, but it was like one week, we had like six plans filed.
Yeah.
And one of them was that twenty-one seventeen Williams with two alternative systems, it took me longer to review it.
First come, first served.
So, and then throw in other stuff, like houses, and dogs, and goats, and cows, and stormwater, and emergency-
Everyone's in a rush, there's always a closing tomorrow, this.
So, I just want you to be aware. So, I just want you to be aware.
Okay, well, building commissioner and I went to a property on Shop Lot Road in Dyson. And, um. We found a single family home with, uh, six campers on the properties. Uh, five were inhabited, one was used for storage. They all had some type of, uh, water set up with, with hoses. Uh, that ran into the campers. We did observe one, one camper put his, uh, it was hard to tell where the septic went, uh, where the sewage went. Uh, one went directly into the woods. Uh, another one, uh, went into a fifty-five gallon drum. Uh, I guess they got chemical toilets and, but in any event, we don't know where the electricity comes from. The whole thing is illegal. Uh, I, I suppose you did read our report?
Yeah, I did, yep.
Okay, it came out, so. Um, we'll be asking them to come in. Maybe we can get them in next meeting. And get this squared away.
Yeah, the next meeting, oh, if we could did something earlier, but that's fine, next meeting.
We have, they, uh, the housing code says that they have, we have thirty days from the, the time they, uh, receive the violation order.
Yeah, do you wanna stretch yourself?
In that they, no, then, in that they request a hearing, you know, we have thirty days, you know, to, to schedule them. Unless they make specific claims and that's outlined, but they did not make any specific claims in the letter I saw from the attorney, so.
So we're good next meeting?
Yeah, I, I, to be on the safe side, I'd rather schedule the next meeting rather than push it to November, cause then we're gonna be.
Yeah, I only have one meeting.
Too far along, so, um. If Todd wants to, or Roz wanna.
She can, um, I, I believe from what I read today, the notification also of the meeting has to go to each occupant.
Correct.
Of each camper.
Which makes sense.
Along with the.
The owner of the property.
Owner of the property. There is a tenant, well, that's legal though. There's two apartments in the barn. Uh, one is for the mother-in-law, the other one is occupied. Um, supposedly according to the commissioner, they have their own septic system for that structure. Um, but the other, the others has, uh, found eight unregistered vehicles. Um. Basically, it was the, the portable, portable water and, uh.
Yeah.
Well, the electricity and all the other things.
The whole mess is illegal.
You can't, you can't permanently reside in, in a camper.
No.
And now with the winter coming, it's just.
Allowable for the housing code.
I was reading about garden hoses today, how they, by sitting there with the sun on, they create a lot more bacteria, which is not good. There are specific hoses that, uh, don't freeze because they, after they're used, they collapse and the water runs out. And some of them don't have, uh, but these just look like plant oil garden hoses to me, so it's not a healthy situation.
So, yeah, those, those campers unfit for human habitation here around, obviously. And only the Board of Health can issue temporary housing. It's under, it's under the housing court, I think it's four thirty, where they actually need permission, yeah. They need permission from us, and that would be in case of somebody had a fire in their house. And we, they wanted to stay on their property, of course, and then we'd give, the right provisions would have to be in place. But just to allow someone, um, to live in those conditions, because that would be, um, they could have, uh, an adverse effect to their own health by living in a condition like that, so.
I know, not to push everybody along, but seven fifteen, so correspondence, seven fifteen.
Oh, alright.
Seven fourteen.
Just kidding.
Is that the one in Bristol, I believe?
Yeah.
There's a, uh, meeting in Prusley, I think we all went last year, it was about rabies, and this is the one for this year, um.
October thirtieth.
So we can email it to everybody, you can put it on your calendars, but it's, it's like something I should be going to, um, assuming you guys want me to go to it, cause it seems important. Um, this is the chairman of the Middle Borough Board of Selectmen looking for, uh, looking for the state next year to do something different than spraying for the mosquitoes after their problem.
That was what we pushed for and they, this was, they started spraying very early this year, very early. They were actually pretty proactive.
Behind the scenes, I don't know if anybody, you actually were very proactive with that, starting that petition. Thank you for that.
So, it's.
Yeah, well, you need people to push the other.
Oh, Middle Borough was critical too, oh, Lakeville was critical too. Were you critical?
Oh, yeah.
The whole region, huh?
Yeah.
We're the hub, I guess.
I don't know how we say that.
So just, just really quick, as far as, um, the mosquitoes going forward in the spring and, and I know when Governor Baker's price count, Seattle, Lakeville, you know. You know, push a lot of money to, to help, you know, deal with the issue. Um, the problem is, in the spring, you know, if we have a very wet winter again, swamps are full of water, that's what the mosquitoes are breeding, that's where they're coming out of. Um, you know, with the triple E or predominant of triple E.
You see who that is?
The, um.
How bad?
Yeah. The, um, in, in the spring, the, the mosquito control does apply larvicide to the swamps the best they can. However, it's extremely difficult, if not completely inaccessible, to reach a lot of the parts of the swamp, so no matter how much money they spend. You get to a point, you just can't do anything about it, so, um, but I think, just mon, I think, you know, I, I have no problem monitoring the, uh, situation, you know. As it comes up and, and again, you know, I know Todd, yourself, myself, we were pretty proactive, you know, this, this is like the epicenter here, so.
Which brings me to, I think we just need to remind everybody that the ban is still in place, but we haven't had a hard frost yet, so still close the public field.
We haven't had the killing frost, so.
Um, on a good note, uh, the Baker-Polito administration, Mass D E P announced two point nine million dollars in grants, of which Dyson received four thousand five hundred dollars. This is through the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program.
It was fifty-four, wasn't it, or was it forty-five?
So they have it backwards.
Yeah.
Fifty-four hundred, yeah, sorry. Uh, these grants, uh, must reinvest the funds in their recycling programs for things such as new recycling, the mims of carbs, public education outreach campaigns. Collection of hard to recycle items and the establishment of recycle programs in schools, municipal buildings and other spaces, so.
Maybe we can get our recycling inventory done now.
Maybe.
I believe you can hire personnel out of that twenty.
Right. Then we can go from there, once we get our inventory done. We'll never be able to go full blown on the, uh.
That's reset.
IQ kits.
That's, that's gonna take a little bit more doing. Those, these are the minutes from the two meetings.
Okay. You guys read this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion approved, the minutes of August twenty-eighth and September eleventh?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made seconded, um.
And that was approval, yeah.
Yeah, both, uh, August twenty-eighth and September eleventh. No further discussion seen on, all's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries. Anything else from anybody wanna mention anything? All done? Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that carries also. Night, everybody. Thank you, Cable. Have a good evening, everyone.